Called meeting to order at 6:00 PM on June 6, 2018. We're starting at 6 tonight. We're supposed to have a tribe board meeting. So far, it's just a single meeting right now. So we'll do the consent agenda. We might as well get that out of the way. And then we can go into David. They have you here this evening. And we'll just go into that. So the consent agenda, we have the minutes from April 11th and April 12th, 2018. And we have warrants PR 1844, PR 1846, PR 1847, PR 1848, AP 1847, AP 1847-S, and AP 1848-V. We have special town election on June 21st. We'll sign the election warrant this evening. Chapter 61A, conversion of land to other uses, land off of Westgate Drive. They would like us to waive the right of first refusal and the 120 waiting day approval period. FY 2018 budget transfers.
Which we don't have any.
We don't have any.
Okay.
One-day liquor license for the Most Holy Redeemer Church for August 5th. That is their Polish festival picnic that they will be having. Chapter 90, road resurfacing. We have an attached list. TPW end of probationary status for Brian Lamorad.
Lamorad.
Lamorad. Thank you. And an MOU hauling and disposal of sludge for the county, Franklin County Solid Waste Management District in the town of Tassau.
I'll make a motion to approve. I have a question on one of the items.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Second for discussion.
Okay.
The Chapter 61A, conversion of land to other uses, land off of Westgate Drive. So that's the property that's the, over by...
North Maple Street.
Yeah, right. The...
Circum...
Research Park there.
Thank you. The research park. That's what I was looking for. There wasn't anything, I don't believe, unless I missed it attached about that. May I add that?
Let's see if it's in here. Here it is. It should have been in the... I don't know where.
Yeah, it's not in here. I just wanted to see. So this is Allard's Farm.
Yeah.
And the location is shined exhibit A. So it's 19 acres. And that was for solar energy. Is that good?
Yeah. Solar energy.
So I just wanted to get an orientation on it. So...
First thing, existing solar array, is that near there or is that...
It should be to the south. Is that maybe southwest of the...
So can you just orient us? I'm assuming that's the, on the bottom is North Maple Street. You want to point for...
One's in front of the... Yeah, solar.
Oh, no. It's not.
That's...
Yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah.
So...
Going this way?
Yeah. So this is the Home Depot store. And we're talking about the land that's to the east of there. That should be developed into a solar farm.
So due east of Home Depot on the other side of North Maple?
Staples, I'm sorry. Staples.
Okay. So Westgate Drive, that's not the research park. Westgate Drive.
That's where the US...
Better way.
Okay. All right. Then that goes back to, yes, it is near what you were talking about. So this is the one we've been talking about all along behind the Staples.
Right.
Sorry. I mean, not all the, we've talked about before here.
So the rollback taxes on that part too, about $2,000.
I also admitted historical commission appointment. Diana West would like to be appointed to that position also.
That's great. Okay. That was my only question. I just wanted to, so it is, it is the existing one that we've been speaking about.
Any further comments from anybody? Questions? All those in favor? Hi. Thank you.
He reported it.
Okay. So we will go into tribe board. We have members of the finance committee here. Thank you for joining us.
Hello, everybody.
Tonight, we were going to, we have presentations by David Isenthal and Linda Sanderson, our treasurer. And we're going to turn it over for you. We have three things on the agenda that we might as well just all hear from you about in the treasurer's office. If that's okay?
Okay. Yes. David Isenthal is here tonight with me because we have new select board members and we have documents to sign. And we thought it would be good... And because we have finance committee members here as well. David is our financial advisor from UniBank and has worked with us on getting all of our bonds and vans for perhaps several years. And the newest ban and what I'm having you sign tonight is, is one that went out to bid last Thursday and came, came in at the lowest bid was for the full amount at 1.85% for the full $2,760,000 that we are borrowing this year. We're doing this for nine months to come due next March, at which point we're going to consider going directly into a bond. And that's different than what we had said originally. We were probably going to do vans for longer, but there are some market considerations for that. Maybe what David would like to...
What was the rate we got in the last one?
Last, 1.24% and the, I think, if I said it was three. Okay. And the year before that was 0.74 maybe? So we've had...
It was criminal, whatever it was.
It was, yeah. It was amazing. Too bad it wasn't reversed because we were doing smaller borrowing then. But this is, this is where we are. So...
And the rate this year is?
1.85%. So that was a great bid from Greenfield Cooperative Bank on the full amount. And we did have other bids that were 2% and higher. So we're very appreciative of that bid and that we've got something to go forward with. Again, I think a little bit of a shift in the plan. If you want, I could send this around now for signing. Well, we talk.
Sure.
That'd be helpful. Okay. There are five tabs and unlike other times where you sign some, all five of you sign in all five places. Thank you, David. Yeah. So, yes, why we're going for nine months this year, that was, that was interesting change because we've always been going for the 12-month.
Bad chair through you. I think this has been a continuing process of evolution. I've been talking with this board, with county administrator, with treasurer for a few years now. We prepared a capital financing plan in the fall of 2016, which was a source of trying to limit the impact on a certain group of projects to the $95 per year impact. Although I think that since the menu of projects approved by the town has expanded, I don't know that the $95 is still quite as much the target. But we've been looking at planning for timing of projects and market conditions and debt as it rolls off. And as I say, this is evolving. Our initial thought had been if the senior center had been proceeding more quickly than it appears to be, that there would be a larger borrowing coming more quickly than calendar year 2019. We had initially thought that we'd be looking at a larger temporary financing, say, late summer, early fall, this coming fiscal year, this calendar year. But as we look at progress on senior center and the other capital projects being somewhat slower than what we initially thought, thought was, well, let's just have this note that the town is doing now in June, and have that roll out to March of 2019, and see where things are at that point, especially the senior center maybe about to, if things go as folks think, senior center may be about to go to, at that point, really proceed in earnest at that point, and a larger borrowing, and whether it's a temporary borrowing or a combination of temporary and permanent financing, that's something that we can evaluate a little bit closer to that period of time.
David, may I ask you, so this is a ban, but if we were going out to more permanent financing right now, what would we be looking at for rates on building project?
Probably in the threes somewhere. I know we have been using 5% for a 25-year permanent financing, but that assumes issuance now, four years from now, fiscal year 2022. And I think what we want to do is look at all options, present options that would still maintain as stable a tax rate impact as possible, but at the same time, well, and also making sure that the, we gear the financings to the cash flow. We don't want to get too far ahead and borrow well ahead of the need for spending.
Sure.
There's no advantage for the town in doing that at this time.
Can I ask though, if, just as a general, general thought, if, if in fact we're expecting two, if not, you know, potentially even three rate hikes this year? I know there's not a direct correlation between Fed rate hikes and municipal borrowing, but it certainly informs the market. I mean, rates aren't likely to dip at this point. So the longer that we delay that borrowing, we're likely locking, will be in a position to lock ourselves into a slightly higher rate.
Right. Although what we're observing is that, and you noted the rate hikes, the rate hikes are all in short-term interest rates, which actually correlate more with the type of borrowing the town is doing now.
The ban.
The ban issue. And we're seeing longer-term rates not move as much at this point, although I think there's some expectation that they will.
That they will.
As well. So, but I think it is with that thought that we want to look at the option of permanent financing for at least a portion of the issue, if it makes sense in the context of what voters in the town believe that they vote for.
Right.
In terms of the capital projects.
So with this ban, we aren't going to pay any of this back basically the next year? We'll start making payments on it? We're just going to pay the interest?
The interest will be payable at maturity on March 15 through 2019.
We've been more aggressive with that though. The idea of the vans at one point, a van by the way, is B-A-N stands for bond anticipation note. So these are short-term notes that, the idea is at some point you roll it into permanent financing with a bond. We've been using the vans as a way to, because we aren't doing a large borrowing yet. And when the note comes due, we have been paying down about half a million dollars and about 30 or so of that has been interest and the rest is principal. So we have been paying a lot of principal down the first couple of years. That's in keeping with the plan for having the debt exclusion portion of the, of the tax rate increase only by the $95. So we had, we got going on making those payments and they're really going mostly to principal. And had we done more borrowing earlier, we'd be making that same payment for more. That would be going to interest.
Okay.
So... Out of the 2 million, 2.7 million, as Linda's saying, only about a million and a half is a renewal of the note that's coming due. The town issued almost $2 million last year. The town is making a principal payment of almost half a million dollars with this, with the maturity of the new, of the notes on June 15th. The town is issuing 1.2 million in new money for various projects. I think the senior center is $350,000 of that. There's the...
Land purchase.
Land purchase. And stormwater is part of this as well.
Dyke survey.
Yeah. The school HDAC is part of that. So, but we're holding, I think the town is holding back on larger borrowings for the larger projects because those projects really have not gotten going in earnest.
Yeah. So once we pay the contracts and the payments are due, then we'll reassess our borrowing and take more money.
That's right.
Do you, and not to get too far off the vans, but do you have an idea of what our average rate is with some of our longer-term financing that we have out there now? What we're paying versus, I'm just wondering if there's existing debt that could be refinanced with shorter-term debt in the meantime until, and then refinanced again at a, you know, when we take out a larger amount down the road to pay for the long-term debt from the senior center?
Yeah. Municipal debt's a little bit different from consumer debt in the sense that usually when debt is issued, and the town issued long-term debt, most recently in the fall of 2014, fiscal year '15. And at that time, the town placed a provision in the bonds that after eight years, which would be 2022, so that's four years from now, the town would have the ability to redeem bonds of that issue, pay off bonds of that issue. We have looked for opportunities and in fact, I've been working for the town for a number of years and have been involved with refunding, refinancings of issues. We will keep an eye on that 2014 issue, which is really the only issue at this point. Right? That would be a possibility. And just one other thing that you should know is that under the Tax Reform Act that just passed in December, it used to be before that passed that municipalities could refinance with what was, with a mechanism called an advance for funding, where you could sell tax-exempt bonds well in advance of when that call for redemption date is. The Tax Reform Act signed in 20, December of 2017 prohibited that on a tax-exempt basis. So the earliest we could, that the town could look at a refinancing of the 2014 bonds is now sometime either at the end of, I don't recall exactly when the call date is, but somewhere 20, late 2021 or early 2022. We will keep an eye on that.
That was just my concern because the rates are trending upwards and I think will be for a long time. So...
I think, I couldn't tell you exactly, but I think the 2014 issue was pretty, had a pretty favorable rate.
It was above the threes or something like that.
It wasn't the threes as well. I don't recall exactly. But that's what I read.
Yeah.
Anything else? One...
Was there a motion, vote to on that?
I'll make a motion. I just want to make, are you done with what you wanted to present on that?
On, on the borrowing, yes. I wondered if the finance committee, any questions? This is very interesting.
Great rate. Might as well get it.
So I'll make a motion to approve the borrowing that's presented?
A second.
Any other questions? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah. Are you going to be able to, you can sign?
Yeah.
Okay. There's five places to sign and then I'll get it back for you after that.
Sure.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about their own vendor warrant?
Can we talk about warrants? It's, that's just going to be it for a few minutes. Do you, do you want to hit that?
No.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. Because I want to get some, get you your copy to you.
I will.
This is going to be a scintillating conversation.
If I drag on, you want to leave, it's okay.
I'm sure it's going to be more so. It's not going to be tomorrow.
I'm going to try to ask you a couple of questions regarding this. It's going to get interesting.
This is on the warrants. I know that the new members are like, they're coming at you all the time and look at the stack right there. I mean, that, that is the way it is. We do every single week of vendor warrant, every week a payroll warrant. We go ahead and we have to pay the payroll warrant whether you've signed it or not, which is why, which is why it piles up sometimes because the paperwork just hasn't gotten pulled together and, and then we get it. So I think you've got three payroll warrants to sign there this week. We have had a bit of an issue with the vendor warrants in that, and it's just, it's just trying to keep up with the times, that the turnaround times from getting, receiving the invoices and getting payments out. Our statements arrive by mail, our payments go out by mail, and everyone wants to get paid in two weeks. And then some of them have finance charges. So getting the warrants turned around without feeling like, you know, just nag, nag, nagging has been a little bit of an issue. Certainly want you to be able to look at everything that you want to look at. But if there's a way that we can come up with together to have a little bit, a quicker turnaround from when we can get the cuts, when we get the cuts checked, checks cut, to when we can get them out. Because at this point, absent you're coming up with another system, I need a full, a majority of select board members to have signed the warrant before we can send the checks out. Now, on a week where, so please, the invoices are given to the accountant by Tuesday at noon. She generally gets, Meredith gets it turned around into us by Friday morning, and that's when we can get the checks cut. And that's when I'm sending out to you. And this was a suggestion of one of, one of you or both of you, new members, that could we at least see the register. So I think that's a great idea. So I get the register and the cover out for you so that you see that this is a $90,000 warrant and this is the list of everyone's being paid and how much. So that's a lot, that you're getting that much information on Friday, but nonetheless, I'm still, I still have to wait. And I generally do because otherwise I'm at risk for having sent out checks that haven't been authorized. Now, we've talked in the past about a more abbreviated system, and I think that we had for, we had it last year for a while, that David approves and Molly, who was the chair of the select board at that point, and could run over at noon on a Friday if we needed her to, that those two signatures would, would take care of things until you could sign them at the next, at the next meeting. We still always want you to sign them at the next meeting, but the issue is cannot get them, the checks out before then. So that, that was working for weeks when you didn't have a select board meeting or when the warrant was running a little bit late. And I actually would, that's happening more often lately. And we have gotten in a bind a few times. And as I say, I'm naming you, or I'm saying, Jennifer, you call them this time, or, or I say, maybe just, just send me an okay by return email. But it feels, it feels like we should be able to do something a little sooner. And I wondered how you felt about it, having looked at these for as long as you have.
So is there a way that we could move to, I guess, maybe David signing off on them or Joyce as the chair, just one signature and then at the end of the month, we could all sign for the entire month's worth, you know, the following months that we're maybe 30 days behind? And that way you have it for the record and that way you're not waiting on us with that? I mean, I don't know what's required as far as, that way we still review it.
You're looking at a two-week turnover roughly, so you don't get...
I'm saying David could sign it each, each week as needed. And then at the end of the month...
No, but I mean, if, if we're meeting on our regular times, it should be no problem. I'm on vacation standard time, that's why I wasn't in here Friday. So, but usually I try to come in and sign the ones I can, for the most part.
Well, I think what, I think what David's getting to is, you know, cost benefit analysis in terms of risk.
Is the okay legal, the way she's sending us an okay?
Yes.
Some of the stuff I can't open, so I just breeze through when I do come here. But as long as the okay's legal, I don't mind responding to your emails.
With an okay? Well, and that's...
That was a question you had.
Right. I'm satisfied with it. I guess, you know, whether it's legal or not, I mean, I think that, you know, I don't think that you're going to say, wait a minute, next Wednesday, I'm not going to sign this. And you sent an email the week before. I think, you know, it's certainly not a majority of you is going to do that.
Somebody would have to have hacked into your email and respond it on your bank.
Right.
So, I mean, I think it's pretty low, low risk. God knows why anyone would want to look at our municipal emails.
So, yeah, I had a couple of thoughts to say you don't...
Well, I mean, it's all public documents.
Yeah. They are. And I can't send the whole warrant and they end up being with all the, it's like 400 pages and it just, it won't transmit. You have trouble inputting a register. Now you would never open up the whole warrant.
I have trouble opening.
Yeah.
Well, I think it can have, Lee, that the town accountant's independent, right? It's a third, third party that comes in. They have no skin in the game per se. So when you think about the internal controls, you've got the outside town accountant, you as the treasurer, and David. I mean, those, so to me, I mean, I think about it when we're looking at it. I'm not necessarily looking at it with the lens of, you know, searching for an invoice that has, doesn't have proper authorization or a fraudulent transaction. It's really more making sure we understand the rhythm of what's flowing through into whom so that it might provoke a question or two that we might not otherwise...
Yeah. We're not auditing it. We're just...
Yeah. When the audit comes around, there's enough questions about everything anyway.
Right.
Yeah. I prefer to know what are the procedures for checking these, which I know you've explained to me before. And there is, you know, the accountant looks at them, you look at them.
Yeah. The one I sent to you, if you see, has two sets of check marks. The accountant's gone down one side and I've gone down the other.
And I see like the, I think probably why we look at them is looking for fraud and those kind of things. I know I personally just don't have the capability to work through that much paperwork in a, in a week or in a day or any time. So for me, I'd rather see what are your procedures and everything like that. I have no qualms about holding up the checks going out for the town. I just feel like we want to know that there is a system in place, that system is being followed and that everything is going out. But I don't think, I, my person, one person on the select board needs to sign off on it.
It's going to, it would take three-way collusion. I mean, that's, that could happen. You know, I don't know if you guys talk about it much, but I mean, you know, it would take three parties to collude to your point.
Yeah. So I was going to say, I think we should still have the responsibility of reviewing it at some point in signing off. And I just don't know that we need to do it on a weekly or even bi-weekly basis. Or that it has to be a pen and ink signature to have that approved?
We want you to have the oversight and welcome that. But you know, when we've got 100, 100 checks that are going out late and we're accruing finance charges or late fees on those.
We don't need that.
Yeah. It doesn't seem like that's what the tax current wants to do.
No.
And I think by getting the register out to you, which I'm really able to do very quickly, because it's just the first seven pages or so of it, something would, if anything jumps out at you, say like, this is okay, but please hold up this bill or send me the underlying invoice on, you know, why we're spending $40,000 on, on this. What's that? You know? And I, I can usually send that. I'll send you that invoice and that will explain it and what the account is or what the article is that we're spending and under. And if you really had an issue with it, we just, we would just go and send that check out.
Right. Yeah. The electronic registers are great because I can...
You always have that option.
Anytime.
Okay. So what process do you want to do?
I mean, I'm just going to throw something out. It's like sending out an email to us with a register. I don't, is there a certain time when you could send that out on Friday and when it needs to be approved by Fri, on Friday?
Um...
Is that how it typically works?
I receive the register usually by Friday morning. If there's a problem, it's later. So I can't say a particular time that it would be out to you, which is why I've gotten in the habit of mailing them out on Monday, unless there's some...
Okay. That's when they typically go out, is Monday.
So do you still want to do pre-review? Because I think what David's suggesting is that the select board, we actually change our policy so that we do a post-review as long as all three of those...
Right. Right. And maybe as long as David or somebody signs off on it, then it's good to go, unless you feel that the chair needs to sign afterwards, we can just be a month behind.
I'm not, I'm not frank with you. I won't be around most of the summer on a Friday.
So, yeah.
Okay. So could we have, especially, and David takes some time off too. So could we have a default of David? I think last year he was the chair, or, and I'm just saying...
Well, I mean, I'm in, I can come in on a Sunday when I come back. Is that too late?
Like them. Or you can, we have a delegate in the...
Or you can...
Yeah. Or one of the one members, I think, of the five.
You're the clerk. I mean, between the two of us, we can get it done by Monday morning.
Thank you. That would really help.
I mean, I can always come in on a Sunday, which I normally do anyway, if there's something I mean, I can always come in on a Sunday, which I normally do anyway, if there's something that's late on a Friday.
And any bill that I'd be getting out, I do make payments before then. I'll drop off flag on my way home, because I don't want to trigger a Staples late charge. So I will do that, so.
Okay.
Yes, I actually, I almost always give you a bunch of services when I'm taking up time, so you know, you know if it's true in such a light, which is great.
So we're saying one person can basically, the chair of the select board would approve these warrants?
Yeah, or they're designated, designate when they're not there, and that can be, the designate could be anyone else.
So David or a member of the board can basically release the checks, and then we'll still do our review and sign for them at the...
Right.
We can do a reality check in September, see how things go.
That's fine. And maybe we could redraft the policy, so I think there is an actual written policy. Well, actually, you have the one in here, so maybe that means...
We have the one from last year.
So we'll actually have David sign off on them, and if he's not here, I would sign off on them. If you're not here, I'm not here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we'll just modify this memo for 2006. Yeah, that's my, that's my policy, as I said, since we've done it once before.
All right, I'll lock this screen.
Eating, eating, mining, mo.
Thank you very much.
So do we need to vote on that?
Should get a GPS device and see who's closest to the bill.
Do we need to vote on that?
Do you want to, do you want to vote when we have the sort of very signature? Or do you want to vote on...
Let's just do it now, get it done when it's in place for the summer.
That way you can start this next week, or whenever your next warrant.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
So yeah, let's, I'll make a motion that we, I'm gonna try to get this wording together. It's confusing, but that we authorize the town administrator, or the select board chair, or their, or her designate to sign all vendor and payroll warrants on behalf of the select board until further review. Does that sound good?
Mm-hmm.
Second.
All right. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anything else?
And the accounting.
Um, can I...
Accounting.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, because, let me deal with the paperwork here, and then...
We can go over the, we can go over the special sound meeting schedule. Did finance have anything they want to share, share tonight?
I do. I have one other, one topic that I did want to bring up.
Okay.
All right. I know we're dealing with a lot of important issues right now, but I'm sure you all agree that no more, or no issue is more important than our safety of our children, and the security of our schools. We're all sadly familiar with the rash of school shootings, and that's devastated the communities. The one thing these communities had in common is none of them thought it was going to happen to them. Right now in Hadley, we just had a troubling message the other day, and that sparked a lot in our schools. I want to commend the school in how they handled it, the police department and the fire department. They did an awesome, awesome job. But I think that we need to go beyond the response of that. I think we need to look at being proactive. I've done some look. There are grants out there. I would like to see if we can set up and start a dialogue, a public dialogue. I know that they've been probably working on these things, but I would like to see if we could, I know that it costs money, so that's why I'm bringing it up as finance, so that way it's something that we can really take a good look at, and, you know, what we need to do, whether it be metal detectors, whether we need to do more training. But I'd like to be proactive in this situation, and I think it's a big topic. And it was pretty scary when we get messages from the superintendent that, that there's a lockdown. Thank goodness, you know, they do a wonderful job there, but if we could stop, you know, even having the threat of something coming into the schools, that would be great.
We have a public safety committee that is comprised of the fire chief, police chief, the DPW director, the building inspector, yes? See on that one that?
No, that's the Maya, who's different from the...
Maya.
Different, but, but that's still, I mean, it's a, it's a group of people that would actually come together and talk about these things, and I think it's a good place to start.
Yeah.
I think that, yeah, and downward, I think that we could, if we could do some, like a public forum or something, I mean, I mean, I'd like to see, and I know that they're probably doing it, but I'd like to hear more that they're doing it. I'd like to, as a parent, I'm sure all the parents want to know what's happening, you know, because it's a scary situation. They just want to know what's, it's happening.
There was, there was quite a bit of lapsed time between the parents really knowing what was going on. I know I got quite a few calls, and I called David to see what was going on eventually, but it, there was quite a bit of time where parents weren't reassured that there was no immediate emergency or danger, you know? So, I don't know if you guys had a little revolve of the situation?
A lot of that had to do with the fact that we didn't know.
Yeah. Well, I kind of figured that, but, yeah.
Takes time. Sorry.
I think that before we go the grant route and start doing grant writing, that the public forum and the chief determining what direction we want to take would probably be better before we start using the time and resources to write those grants, only because, yes, there's metal detectors and things like that, but those aren't always the best bet to stop the current problems out there, just from the law enforcement perspective. So, not to say that we don't want to do that, but there may be better ways to spend the money that might be more effective. So I just think the departments and the chiefs and the public's input, just to direct us, you know, so we can basically target something specific and get it moving, rather than just kind of throw a bunch of stuff out there.
And I, I think too, that the school department should be...
Absolutely.
So that's, yeah, that's where I, what I was gonna say, is I completely agree with that, but this isn't something that one department can make a decision on, and it needs to be school committee, you know, school department, the superintendent, obviously, police, fire, and most importantly, you know, the citizens of Hadley and folks who have, you know, kids in the schools. None of these steps are, can be taken lightly, because it is very important, but, you know, we need to go in the right direction. And it needs to be something that the folks who live in Hadley want to do. It's not gonna force things.
So when you guys do your post-mortem, or whatever you want to call it, you know, after an event...
Nobody died, no post-mortem.
You know?
Debrief.
But when you guys had your debriefing afterwards, did you talk about any, anything along the lines, and it is a tri-board meeting, and it's...
Right, or that five, five would be appropriate.
Basically, they have their own meeting tonight.
School committee meeting tonight, so it's good.
Well, hopefully it'll come a bit...
So, so that's, that's kind of part of it, and I spoke with Amy earlier about it. We've actually worked, we've actually were invited to the school committee's executive session a few months back. Mike Romano with the SRO, and I, and I know the fire chief has been involved as well. They, you know, we actually, we were working with the trooper Carmichael, who does this stuff specifically for schools, to do threat assessments in each school. So that's some of the things that they're doing on their end, as far as the school committee goes, moving in these directions. Metal detectors did come up as part of it. But as far as the after-action report, that was focused mainly on that investigation. But it will, it will expand to include what's the next step, as far as something large of that nature. You know, we have cameras, and, you know, several other things, high-cost items that we think would be steps in the right direction. But, like I said, it's multifaceted. There needs to be a lot of input from folks who have, you know, knowledge on which direction we should be going.
You know, depending what the grant would be funding, some of the large-ticket items may be something that would be worthless, you know?
Well, one thing you also have to remember is that...
Every situation is different, no matter what. It's just like with the fire service.
Well, and the other thing is, is a lot of the feedback that we got, at least at the police department, either through the school or directly, was the thing that made everybody feel the most safe was the presence of the police and the fire department there that day. They didn't, most people, like you said, John, didn't have enough information to know exactly what was going on, but simply the fact that we had people there is what made people feel safe. That's kind of the direction, it's, it's, that's the direction that I'm heading with my operational budgets as we move forward. We have one SRO for four schools.
Right.
That's not enough. It's that simple.
So when I got the message, I did, it was, it did make me feel safe. When, so I have a child in both schools. It did make me feel safe to know that they were there. But before I knew what the message said, because the message, it was unclear that there was a message, but I didn't know what it said. It made me very anxious, well, what about tomorrow?
Right.
You know, when they're not there.
One thing I will say that maybe we can look into for all the different departments is, and just coming from other towns and cities that I lived in recently, the communication methods that were available are a lot faster, and, you know, there's text messaging systems and other emergency alert systems. Granted, we have the email, and Dr. McKenzie did, you know, I guess the best she could have been getting emails out, and which, which was very much appreciated. But there's systems out there that I know there's grants available for, that say the police department has the ability to blast out, there's an accident over here, there's, you know, something going on over here, there's a fire over here. DPW can say that, you know, you can subscribe to different alerts, or overall, the town can send them out, or different departments, and kind of improve communication across the board. You know, the mothers' club does a good job with sponsoring the school closings and the phone calls and stuff like that. But as far as, you know, for every department, I think the communication can be improved with modern technology a little bit, rather than having to have her type out a long email and explain everything, just get, get that information moving quicker.
We've never fully implemented the technology we have, correct?
The Code Red system is avail, it is available, it is working, it is in Mike's, the fire, the fire chief's domain.
Right.
He's essentially, I'm not sure exactly where he's at, but he is, he has different blocks of categories if he can send emergency messages out. I don't know whether or not parents of students is one of those categories.
We get the, we get the school cancellations via text message, so I don't know how that's different than...
Just PTO, or mothers' clubs.
Sponsored, yeah. Okay, okay. But that system is there. With Code Red, I've noticed, and maybe it's just the way I have it set up, but you get an alert in the app, and you actually have to go into the app to look at it, versus just a text message showing up, which to me is a heck of a lot easier than having to log into something. It's kind of an out, you know, it's a special case, so it's...
It is, yeah.
So we, so we will progress to you working with Superintendent McKenzie?
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's something that...
Any of the departments that you feel is necessary, fire chief?
Yeah.
And then outreach to the public, or whatever, if they want to hold a public forum on that?
I think it's probably, I think it's probably the best idea.
Where it should head probably after this incident, and, you know, I agree with Amy that at these times, that Hadley does not sit in a bubble, you know, and no other town sits in a bubble. So anything can happen anywhere.
And timing-wise, I mean, having that forum, you know, if it was all possible, it would make sense to have it before the next school year starts, you know, so people are much more informed walking in, in terms of what to expect. And if that dialogue has resulted in any suggestion about expenditures that, that could result, you know, or come through grant funding, I'm sure that we would all fully be supportive of that.
Yeah, like I said, what I can tell you is the school committee is, is fully on board with investigating all avenues. They were thinking more capital. Obviously, grants are, you know, they are drying up in different areas. They have been for some time, but there may be things out there, you know, specifically for specific items, metal detectors just as a, you know, just throwing that out there, if that's where people want to head. As you were saying earlier, there are other pitfalls that come after, you know, that you have, that you have to take into consideration if you're gonna do something like metal detectors, but that's, those, those are, some of them are, are gonna entail a cost. You know, if, if you're sending 150 kids through a metal detector every morning and it beeps, you don't want...
They're always checking it.
Exactly. Somebody needs to now check this person, and what happens if it is something? You can't just, the metal detector isn't gonna take the gun away from...
Who makes that decision to put those metal detectors there? Because there could be a lot of parents that don't want their kids going through metal detectors into school, because that's an intimidation factor.
That's why there needs to be more discussion.
Yeah.
We're only at the tip of it right now, so...
That's what I was gonna say, we should have more.
That's why it's so important to have a discussion, and very similar to the ambulance. And I thought when we were looking at what ambulance was, which one were we looking at, it did cost, wasn't, didn't seem to be as big of a factor. The factor was, what was the best service for the person, for our, our community? What was, how are we gonna best serve our community? And to me, the, the school's safety is top, right there. So cost isn't a factor. People want to see their children safe. That's the most important thing.
I'd underscore what Mike said too, that I'm not sure everybody caught too. I heard you say four schools. It, I mean, clearly we're focused on Hopkins Academy and have the elementary school that serves most of the kids here, but we also have the Chinese immersion school in Hartsburg in town as well. And so...
And Hartsburg is really starting to, they're starting to come around to everything that we're doing in the other three schools as well. So it's, it's ramping up Mike's workload. Everyone really seems really on board with a lot of this emergency planning and making sure that we, we know what we're doing together as a group. Last week was, was a good, I hate to say it this way, but it was a good test to see how well we work inter-agency with the school department, you know, the superintendent, the fire department and all that. And I know Annie won't say this, but I'll say it. Her, obviously, her top concern was the safety of the school and the kids in it, but communication was a very close second. Whether or not the technology that she has is the best, I don't know, but I can tell you that she was, you know, hard-charging to push information out there every, after she checked with us to make sure it was okay to go. That was a number-one concern, to get that out there to everybody. There's just, as you know, there's just certain things we can share at certain times. But I just want everybody to know that she was...
She does an amazing job of that.
Yeah, she was amazing.
So she, she wrote me a letter, so I have, this might be an opportune time for me to read this. It said, "Dear Joyce, I realize I write to you and the select board regularly about the contributions of our public safety officers make to our schools. I would like to once again acknowledge the skill and professionalism our public safety officers demonstrate, and express my gratitude for their commitment to keeping our students and community safe. On Tuesday, May 29th, we identified a potential security threat at Hopkins Academy. Police and fire have responded immediately. Chief Mason, Sergeant Cook, Sergeant Hartwright, Detective Green, and Officer Sutter, Douglas and Kupian arrived at Hopkins, assessed the scene, initiated investigation, and implemented procedures to ensure safe, student safety, and maintain a calm environment. Chiefs Bank and Abel requested Deputy Chief Evan Bryant and Lieutenant Nick McKenna and Brian Moskevich maintain a presence at the elementary school as police investigated the incident. The presence of firefighters at Evora Elementary School ensured the safety of the students and staff and provided a sense of security for everyone at the elementary. I received numerous emails from parents thanking the school department and public safety for responding promptly, exercising an overabundance of caution, and for doing everything they could to keep the children safe and feeling secure. Both chiefs and Sergeant Cook worked with me throughout the day to draft incident updates and communicate with families. In the days following the incident, Officer Romano has been present at Hopkins Academy to answer questions from students and staff. He has attended a faculty meeting to discuss and debrief the incident. His presence in our schools instills confidence and a sense of safety among our students and faculty. We appreciate all he does. Hadley is fortunate to have such high-quality police officers and firefighters. Our community that invests in public safety is a community that cares deeply about, about the welfare of its citizens. Thank you for investing in our, supporting our dedicated professional public safety personnel. As you know, I believe it is important to recognize excellent work. I hope you consider sharing this with the select board. I would like to personally thank every Hadley public safety officer on behalf of Hadley Public Schools. So, thank you very much. Of course, these letters have gone into each and every officer's box. We did give light copies of these for that purpose. So, thank you to everyone for their dedication and their support for the schools. And I know that it will go further again as we establish, you know, a means of the school taking further look at what's going on and setting up a policy. I know our public safety will also be involved in that. So, thank you.
Just a side footnote to this, is we are having our capital, capital campaign, capital committee meetings coming up. So if there's anything you foresee, you might want to just put a line item in there.
So if there's anything you foresee, we might wanna just put a line item in there with just some numbers, just to plan for it, but no big deal, just a footnote.
Can we just ask, Chief Bank and Abel, you weren't here when we were talking a little bit earlier, but we were talking about the communication system, the texting system that you have.
The Code Red?
Code Red.
Yeah, Code Red, and how, if it's fully implemented, or if it's in need of upgrade, or what the status is on that?
The company upgrades that annually, so there's really nothing we need to do other than just update them if our population increases potentially.
Okay. We didn't know if there were any other, like, groups or anything that people should be participating in, or if there's any further education on what people need to do from your standpoint?
The only thing we haven't done in a while is we haven't done any outreach on it to get other folks to check it out on the website. And that's something we could assign to Evan, Taran Harriman used to do that, so we could certainly do that.
How do you find it? Not to interrupt you, but how do you, how do you find it? It's on the Hadley Fire website?
It's on the town of Hadley. It's right on the main page, it says Code Red. That's where you can sign up with all your different phone numbers, text message numbers, or text message, whatever, whatever that is. Emails, everything, I think you can do up to four different responses that they can send messages out to. And that's strictly just used for emergencies, nothing else.
Do we have a lot of people signed up for that, or is that?
We actually, they, the, the company goes through and signs up everybody that has a landline. And then it's up to those people, we offer it up all the time, but it's up to the people if they wanna take advantage of it, because you're giving your personal information. Obviously, it doesn't go anywhere, they don't, they don't sell it or anything like that, but some people still don't like giving out their, their information. But anybody that has a landline, that's populated.
And what if you don't have a landline?
Then it would be up to you to sign up and put your cellphone or whatever. If you wanna just do an email, you can do that as well.
Who, who pushes out the alerts? Because I'm signed up for it and nothing for that incident was pushed out that I saw on Code Red.
That's correct. We did not push anything out on that, because that was a school, the school has their own reverse information, so it wasn't something that we felt that should be going out to the entire town on that, because then all of a sudden we have 5,000 people driving over to the school to take a look to see what's going on. So that, that wasn't even entertained at the time, but I'm, I'm one. I believe David is a backup to me. Mike Mason has access, and then we're also using it for, I don't know if you're still using it, but the police were using it for recall of police officers for details. We actually have all the schools, we're trying to get a few additional numbers from new staff, so that we'll be able to populate, you can populate individual groups, so we have a school group. We're trying to get it so that you won't have to do your snow list, we've been working on that, that's supposed to be completed, but something that maybe Evan can finish up now, because Taran was working on that. So instead of having the call down at 6:00 AM, David could just punch out a quick reverse call on that system, saying, "No work today," or, or whatever.
Do you have a form people can fill out?
You go right on the website, if you, if they don't know how to do it, we can, they can give us the information, they can come into the station and we can fill it out for them.
If you have a form, we can make it part of our outreach that we're doing at the shredding event with the number please and the.
We could give them the information as to where to go. I mean, I, I prefer to have a laptop there and just enter it manually for them, rather than having their information on, on paper, that way it's one less thing that we have to make sure it gets shredded. But yeah, we can, we can set that up there.
So if anybody's interested in signing up for Code Red, it's at www.hadleyma.org. It's right on the bottom of the page.
I believe when you click on any department, I think it stays there. So if you go to the fire department, you're having an issue with it, you can call the fire department, the business line, and we'll walk you through it.
And there's an app for your phone, so.
Perfect, alright. Should we do special town meeting countdown? We'll get back to that. May 30th, we're past the date, the Capital Plan update starts. June 20th, the Select Board sets state of special fall town meeting. We'll do that at our next meeting. Select Board opens the warrant, deadline for articles will be August 1st. Introductible warrant prepared and presented to Select Board and Finance Committee. August 1st, Select Board does the warrant, all articles and capital requests are due. August 6th, Capital Plan Committee begins meeting. Committee dates include August 8th, August 20th, and August 27th.
We actually have an update on that scheduled to go ahead.
Okay. August 15th will be Select Board review warrants. September 19th, Finance Committee, CPA Committee, Capital Planning Committee recommendations are complete. Warrants and motions are prepared and set to town council for review.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
Can we vote on setting the date for the meeting tonight if possible?
It is set, well, town meeting is October 18th.
But you guys, you guys will.
Does that not work for you?
No, I wanna put the steps into the planning board, it was, it was last night, I was trying to plan.
Okay. September 26th, legal review of articles and motions is complete, Select Board signs the warrant. Last date of post the warrant and publish notice of the special town meeting is October 4th. October 5th, motions are distributed to Select Board, Moderator, Finance Committee, and others. October 11th, we'll have a special town meeting, public forum. And October 18th is a special town meeting.
The only event that has, Chris wanted to do capital projects, we haven't submitted. On June 22nd, and the Capital Committee meeting in June and July. And it'd be a 10-year capital plan, not a five-year capital plan.
Do we wanna just update this up to those dates? We don't have to do it right now, just.
Yeah, so soon, soon as I get your, your okay, then I will update everything and get it up to the Department, and so if they have, and post it so everybody knows what they're like.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to the, the, the meta-dates.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty. Anything else from finance tonight? As we'll move into.
I think we, we need to do some transfers.
Don't have any for you right now.
Do we have something from the fire department?
I was just gonna, I was gonna submit it to you tonight, I just got it done, we had talked about it yesterday.
Okay.
It's up to you if you want, we can talk about it at the next meeting, we're just, it's part of the ambulance and.
And we're meeting tomorrow too, if it's something interesting.
It's up to you.
Is it just needs the Finance Committee to sign up on it?
I think it's a line-to-line transfer, or is it a reserve transfer?
It's line-to-line.
Line-to-line salaries, the expenses.
Select Board and the Finance Committee.
Would you like to take a look at it, Chair?
Sure. Yeah, I really want you to.
Approve that schedule, but I guess that basically needs to be approved, that date.
So, you just voted to approve this schedule?
But it does save the.
On the, on the schedule itself, it actually has. And we were just trying to nail down that date tonight.
We can nail it down tonight.
So I'll make a motion that we set the special town meeting date for October 15th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any more can do whatever they gotta do.
Okay.
Through the paperwork?
Sure. So I, I put this together because we are under the assumption that at some point we'll be signing a contract with somebody for ambulance service, and assuming that that ambulance will be going into the station. We had discussed this at one of our ambulance committee meetings about having to make some space in the station, because we haven't gone through the vote on the North Station at this time. And given that was approved, it would still be at least another year before that North Station would be built. We are, we are very stressed on, on space as it is. So what we're requesting, and there was one additional item that we had talked about as well, I had talked to David and Joyce and Molly about, was the first item you see, it's $2,500 to the University of Massachusetts for one of their old staff cars that they are selling. It would replace our Ford Expedition, our Car 2, that had to be retired back to the excess property program, because it started on fire twice. We were unable to put it in park and was becoming too much of a hazard. That was free to the town, and we put very little maintenance into it, and it, it served us for four-plus years, after it served the Grandi Fire Department for a number of years, and then the federal, federal program as well. The University of Massachusetts has, it's actually, from what I was told, Barbo Connor's old chief's car, and it's in very good shape, that was looked at by Brian Moskevich, our mechanic firefighter that we have on board, and he said it would definitely fill this gap we have for, you know, the next two years, three years, until we put into capital for a new staff car for our deputy chief, who is currently driving around in his, his own pickup. We're waiting, we are waiting for the administrative truck that we combine as a utility vehicle and the ability for our fire prevention and folks to drive around in town, that's due to come in in the next few weeks, but it still doesn't fill that gap. We just don't have enough cars for people to get around in unless they wanna drive around in a fire truck. So that was one request. The other part is a, was $17,500, and this is all coming out of the full-time salaries. So we had budgeted for six months for the four full-time firefighters. We've brought on two, and the other two are slated to get in before July 1st. So factoring in what we have to pay out for those full-time firefighters, we're, we're looking at a pretty substantial amount of money going back to the town, and we thought this would be a good way to try and fund some of these short-term projects. We currently have about $80,000 in that fire line. And so if we, if we covered all these projects, it's, it's, I think, $35,000. So we, we wouldn't really be putting a huge dent in that. You're gonna be seeing some money returned from the fire administrative assistant that was, that left. It's about $5,800 left in that line. And our call force line, the temporary wages, that, that has, there's substantial money left in those lines too, just from the decrease in response from call force members, and Stanley's no longer with us, so that was a big part of that. They will have a little bit of training and fire prevention wages left as well. So I think we have plenty of money to cover the rest of our budget. So we're looking to do, right now, we have a big training prop inside of our station, multiple training props. We store speedy dry for car accidents, we store sand, or salt, I should say. So what we're looking to do is build that training prop on the west side of the station, the backside of the building, between the two bay doors, and put a 10-by, approximately 10-by-14 structure there that would act as that training structure that we have in the station, so we could remove that, and then also allow us to store the lawnmower, snow blower, speedy dry, salt, everything outside of the station in that structure. So it would multitask as a training structure and also some storage for us. The $10,500 purchase, number three, would be for a 30-by-30, 12-gauge metal structure to house our, our boat, brush 2, and utility truck temporarily, until a decision is made, if we're gonna go forward with the North Station. If it happens, then that structure could be either repurposed in town or, or sold. So that's what that structure's part is. And the last part for $10,000 is to replace the woodshed on the police side of the stru- on the police side of the building. The roof is completely falling off. The base of it is falling apart, it's not big enough for, having spoken with the police chief on it. We're looking to get a little bit bigger of a structure and reconfigure it on the property, so we can actually, you'll, you'll be seeing one of our capital projects that was in last year, I think we had talked about it, with repaving the public safety complex and adding a pad for our dumpsters and the two trailers that we have. So that's what, that's what we're requesting for those transfers.
So Mike, just a question for you, and I know we've talked a little bit, so people might be thinking about it too. So, the ask is, so, all total is just over $40,000. And so, $17,500 is for build out of a storage training addition. And part of that is to take training equipment effectively that's being stored in the station, and it provides an expanded space and pushes that out. Then the gauge metal structure is for the boat, brush 2, and utility truck, to free up space for those. And then the other one is basically kind of replacement of a building that's currently just kinda running anyway. But are, are you asking for money to build storage for anything that we might get rid of? Or is all of this stuff you're planning on keeping?
This is all stuff that we're planning on keeping, we just, we don't have room in the North Station right now. So Engine 3, I mean luck, well, I shouldn't say luckily, it's being borrowed right now. So we have, we're literally trying to get stuff cleaned out in anticipation of that truck coming back, because South Hadley's down a pumper, so they requested our, our Engine 3, which we are helping them out with. That's not gonna last that long, so that means, our plan was to move Engine 3 up north, because that's the normal protocol, but we don't have that north space unless we do that, that bump out. But we thought it would be a little bit more wise to wait and see what the vote is, and if we're gonna be building that out, leave Engine 2 up there, not invest small dollars on that, and, and move forward that way. If not, then we're gonna have to do the bump out and see if we can get Engine 3 into that, that building. And then we'll reassess Engine 2, and we don't wanna get rid of Engine 2 right now, because it's a spare for us, and it is still rolling out the door all the time. And I don't think it's wise at this point, but we're still looking at the cost for maintaining it. If it comes back with a huge maintenance cost this year, then it will probably be retired. But we're hoping to keep it for at least a year or two after the addition of Engine 4.
And do we have to do both the storage training addition and gauge metal structure in order to make room for the ambulance?
Well, we can park equipment outside and put a tarp over it, so we could do that, but we're looking at, you know, we're looking at a boat that's been inside the structure for its entire life, along with brush 2.
Do we use the boat?
Yes, we use the boat quite often, yes.
We have, we're on the river.
Water.
The boat's actually used for both departments. Police actually will utilize it to get out to the little island with all the folks partying and the bonfires and the fireworks, and then also during the summer, we usually have multiple incidents where we have, you know, people that are injured from ski, ski doos. We've also assisted mutual aid down to South Hadley. We have assisted up north for the gentleman who drove his car into the river for search and rescue. So that boat is quite, quite useful. It's also, it was also used as part of the Dyke inspection, which we could certainly start utilizing again, because it's a big difference when you're looking at it from the river versus on top of it. So we were using it as well.
And will that structure have sides on it?
It will have sides, yes. It'll have sides, it'll actually have gable ends and a back end. It will have one opening on the front side. So it's mostly just, it's not gonna be heated, so, you know, if winter time comes and we don't have a plan in place, we'll be emptying the tanks on it, it's, it's just gonna, you know, there's hose, there's equipment on here. It's just not something that should be sitting outside. We have the utility truck right now with the old brush pump in it that's sitting outside the station, which we don't like. And, you know, Molly and I had talked about it, and we're trying to get rid of one for one. So if something's coming in, let's get rid of one or two things, and we've really been working hard on doing that.
And this is all money that's remaining at the end of fiscal year, which is in.
Correct.
Couple weeks.
That shack's just sitting on blocks, there's no flooring, the existing one on the south side.
The police shed?
Yeah.
I think they originally put it on blocks, but everything is rotting out.
No, that's what I'm saying, there's no concrete flooring. Why don't you put, why don't you put that big building on that south side and just make it big enough for both, and you're there permanently. You're always gonna need the room on the police or the fire side.
I mean, that's an option, but those structures, I mean, those structures, we're looking at, you know, $10,000 for a 12-by-14, so it would be, we were talking about repurposing this metal structure on the police side after, so maybe they could park their cruisers, but we also have those two, we have the police, their, their trailer that they have for.
Yeah, but you know, see what I'm saying, why do it twice? When you put the one, one bigger building right up there on that south side, which you don't. Which you don't utilize that corner anyway. Um, you keep it on the south side of that parking lot where all the, the lawn is. You got plenty of room there. At least thirty-four feet.
It means a bigger structure rather than two.
I understand. I'm just not sure that you want to put up, because it's going to be like twenty-something, thirty-something feet tall.
It's thirty by thirty and it's twelve feet.
Put something that tall and ugly.
Plus you're talking about an open building versus a enclosed, the ability to lock it up. Like they, you know, they keep bikes in it and so it'd have to have a portion that, I mean, we can certainly look into it. I'm not opposed to it. Trust me, I'd rather not lose the parking on the fire department side. But, um, we can certainly look into that. It's just, it would be either two separate types of structures or we have to-
You want something that's movable so that in case you have to bump out the other side there, you're going to have room to do it. So-
I, I know, but the way that whole parking lot's set up right now, Joe, especially in the winter time, uh, plowing. If everything was in, inside under one cover on that south corner where that wooden shack is right now, it would be a lot easier plowing that place, you know? Now you've got to make the pass over to the elementary school and it would just be one uniform, huh? Uniform, small building.
We just have to make the pad bigger probably, right?
Well, it depends on if you need it secured too, because you have stuff in there that you-
Well, I mean, we could just design it differently to have a secure area.
Yeah, just, I, I don't see a big problem with securing it. You're putting four sides on it and a couple of garage doors on it anyway, probably, right?
Well, I mean, we can, we can look at a different type of building, but it would be pouring a concrete thing rather than having a wood structure come in and putting it up on.
That's what I'm saying. For the amount of money you've got in both of these, you probably could build one, one nice permanent one over there rather than-
We do have in capital to expand that parking. So, I mean, it could certainly be incorporated into that as well. But that's-
And the other question.
Yeah.
Chief, what are you using now?
Using now for what?
Instead of that blue expedition.
Nick and, um, Nick and Brian, if they're responding to a caller, the police have lent us one of their detail cars, but they take it back when they need it. Uh, and then Evan's been driving his, his personal vehicle or the utility truck.
You don't have one coming up?
I just, I said that. We have-
No. Police don't have one coming up to release their fire?
To release.
Are they rotating one out?
Rotating one out?
No, I actually pulled our cruiser from capital this year. We don't, we're, we're actually in pretty good shape with the new ones. Our maintenance has done really good. We have a new maintenance officer taking care of stuff. So I pulled it for this, this upcoming year. So you're going to have, you won't have that expense.
We actually talked about that and, um, he want, he is looking to get that back into service for details, especially with what's coming up down the road for, you know, the summer. So it's, it's been very nice that he's loaned it to us right now. It's just, you know, we're responding to medical calls and fire, some fire-related calls, a police cruiser. So it's, it's nice, but it's something that was intended to be short-term.
No, I'm just, in the past, we've, we've always tried to rotate a police cruiser out into the fire if, if it was-
Sure.
In good shape and, and reasonable condition.
I'd be more than happy to put the cruiser back on capital and rotate that car over to the fire department.
Let me know. We just had an opportunity when we found that car.
Would you like to allocate this money for, so that the finance committee can take it tomorrow and, uh, review it? Kind of get a motion here going?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to reallocate, transfer this money. Uh, for the vehicle and the two storage sheds, three storage sheds, two storage sheds and fill that.
And then you could look at it and see with that money if you could do the one.
Absolutely.
You two, you could figure it out.
And I'll second it, just reminding everybody that's forty thousand that will be coming into, to free cash though. So extra, just, just reminder.
Is there any, just one more question. Is there any additional money that you would be transferring to free cash or is this everything you've got basically?
No, there's going to be a bunch more money transferring to free cash, I believe. So, uh, like I said, I factored it, you know, we're looking at maybe two, two weeks of salaries for the firefighters. I figured probably around ten or fifteen thousand to finish up this fiscal year. And I have ninety-two thousand left minus the forty. So that's just for that full-time. That doesn't include the call force temporary wages, the training wages, and the fire administrative, the five thousand eight hundred dollars in that. So I think you might be looking at a good chunk.
Motion on the table, first and second. All is in favor?
I, I.
Close date?
Yeah.
Go to finance for tomorrow night?
Thank you.
Excavation, there's been D and S.
Oh, we see every day services?
Go ahead, Linda. Accounting services.
Accounting services. Accounting services. So we went out to bid, uh, for accounting services. It's regional, uh, bid through the financial, uh, planning commission. Uh, they contacted eight companies, only one sent back a proposal. That was their insured out of Saginaw Beach, uh, down by Cape Cod. Uh, and, uh, the price was seventy thousand dollars for the first year. And then, uh, additional money is thereafter. Independent of our bid process, and by the way, we, we don't have to bid for accounting services. It's under chapter thirty B, but we can anyways. Um, independent of the, uh, account, of the, uh, bid. Um, our current, uh, uh, accounting services through Bay State Municipal Accounting, submitted a proposal for, uh, less money, uh, fifty-five thousand dollars as opposed to seventy thousand dollars. They did not have information about the, uh, the bid, so this is not influenced by one other or another. And members of the financial management team met to evaluate the, the accounting proposals, conducted interviews with the two accounting firms. Um, and we decided that, uh, we'd make a recommendation to the select one that we continue for one year with Bay State Municipal Accounting. Subject to the condition that A, a representative attends all department head meetings from now on. B, that department heads make use of the weekly conference calls with the treasurer and county administrator. And Bay State Municipal Accounting, we have, uh, standing appointment at nine-thirty on Friday morning. So we call in and we, uh, have a laundry list of things that we go through. Marlo, you're invited to this one coming up on this Friday for your issue. Uh, C, that Bay State Municipal Accounting performs quarterly budget check-ins with department heads. D, that the Bay State Municipal Accounting conducts a training session, sort of like a boot camp, about accounting procedures, how do you do your vendor, uh, turnovers, how do you submit payroll? How do you, how do you check up on information? And then finally, that the town develops and follows a reporting calendar for reconciliations, revenue reports and expenditure reports. So, uh, the reason why we've decided not to go with the insurance operation, even though it's very impressive. Say it's more money, but it also seems like this is not the year for a start of operation. We have the new free cash certification, uh, process, which we'd have to start from scratch with a new company. We also in connection, connection with the, uh, with the, uh, bonding that we're anticipating to do. That was probably going to be acidophilic recertification of our bond ratings through standards and board. And it didn't seem prudent to choose this year as a start. So one year with Bay State Municipal Accounting, subject to these conditions. Uh, and then we'll be back and, uh, and evaluate how well they were able to up their game, be much more responsive to the departments, uh, as well as getting the reports in on kind that we've, uh, had some troubles with. And, uh, if they, if they've improved their process, and that's one thing. If they haven't been able to improve their process, then we can take another look at insurance operation.
So can I just ask, I mean, the conditions are always a, a good idea, but they're only worthwhile if there's any teeth in them. So short of saying, okay, here are the conditions, but then, you know, they, they know that they've got the contract for a year anyway. I mean, is currently withholding payment or what, what, what can we do if they violate the conditions?
Well, we can certainly write that into the contract.
I'd be in favor of writing something in the contract.
Something that says we can terminate the contract is what I have at the end.
But it's just trying to, trying to get somebody in midstream. I mean, they're kind of holding the, the cards on that one. It would be really hard. So I think it would have to be monetary.
Do we have that list of conditions? It doesn't look like that was in our, in these proposals.
It wasn't in the, uh, the information. We loaded up into the board docs, except that it is in my administrator's report under the financial management team. All those conditions are spelled out there.
And do we have a plan B if, if Justin will agree to the conditions?
Good insurance.
Linda, uh, what's your take? I mean, you deal with-
Yeah, I am, I, I raise the concern about our, of the bonding coming up and that, uh, we're also, because of the bond that we would be doing early in the year, because you, you see this year we're doing our notes in June. Um, and next year we'll be doing it in March, which is three months earlier, which means everything that we, um, we want to have our audit done, we have one, have our, well, free cashes per town meeting, but mostly the audit, um, which we had kind of aggressive schedule with them this year, but it still just came out, did it come out in March? I'm not remembering that, March or early April. Yeah. Um, I thi- I think that's it. We would, now, we've already talked with the auditor about, we need it done sooner this year because we're not just doing a note, we may be going for the full bond. And, uh, they have stepped that up and are coming out to their initial meeting in September. And this past year, I think it was in December. So we're moving everything forward and have the same players working together. The auditor has worked with this accountant, has worked with us to have the people be the same, um, and be able to, let's do it again. Just like we finished up, let's see if we can get it done a bit quicker. That, that seemed, um, that, that seemed reasonable. Um, in, it, it, the, being mindful that the inconvenience has been the relationship with department heads. And that's something that we, that's why it's being built in this condition. I don't think it's something, I don't know if you've spoken of it in yet. I don't think, it's certainly not something that's objected to. I just think sometimes it's not fully understood. One of the teeth that I plan to have is nagging. I mean, a lot, I mean, we talked with someone at, honestly, a department of revenue who said, well, you kind of get that with this one, you're kind of going to get that same thing here. You need to learn how to be a squeaky wheel. And maybe we need to learn how to be a squeaky wheel. And maybe we have to turn this Friday morning one into more than our, and, and he's aware, but I don't say anything about him that I don't say to him. It's like, we really need this. This is really important. Uh, I don't always bring everything up at every meeting, but I think we can have to, huh, clearly. And, and that's the idea of bringing department heads in.
But you're getting, you're getting what you need though, as far as, with these conditions, you'll get what you need.
What I need is the step up in the last two or three months. So, but, you know, I, I'm on the front line. And, and I think that is a, you know, that's, that's just the start.
We've, we've had this trouble since we've been with this company. We had an accountant here, which we had some issues with, but maybe it's time to look back on getting an accountant back here full-time for the amount that you're getting these bids and, uh, that would be here forty hours a week.
We, we did discuss that, that's the only things that would come back on the table if, you know, if this doesn't work out. And I don't think that we would wait a year and consider. I think we would, you know, go into six months and start looking at the options.
We've had trouble right from the beginning with this.
Right. And, and we had another, essentially, another possibility to discuss to get some, and full-time isn't necessarily an accountant, but as a regular, we have a part-time accountant that can be used to, and a full-time assistant accountant that would somehow, that would be able to. See, a lot of why we need someone present is to get out these reports. And department head needs a report and you get out the report. That's not accountant work necessarily. In fact, Jonah and I can do that. It's that we, you know, we, we, we can't do it on top of what we're, else we're doing all the time. You need to have the accountant's department doing the accountant work. Um, so we, there might be just financially a better way to work it out for the town so that the services are met. And what Amy was saying earlier, what are the services that the department, I think we'll get that done in the most efficient way. And maybe not necessarily go for the full-time accountant if we have other options.
And one of the things we talked about in the department head meeting today is that there were actually some, um, good suggestions that Justin brought to the table. But, and one of them was implemented and then almost immediately kind of fell off. And that was the monthly publication of reports. So what happened was department heads were like, oh, this is great, you know, we have access to it. And then suddenly they couldn't get access to it any longer. It was blamed on a password issue or something. And then there were other great suggestions that he brought to the table, but they were never implemented. So I think the department heads would be a lot happier if, if it just was carried out the way it was supposed to be carried out. And only performance in this regard will tell.
So in six months, we'll reevaluate.
Well, this is really, you know, this, I'm agreeable to that. And I think the entire, uh, those of us who are meeting and talking to the interviewing are also sort of came to that same conclusion.
So that we're not waiting until the year is up before we do something.
Absolutely not.
Six months, you'll have a good idea if they're going to-
I think I have a pretty good idea. Three, three months. I really do.
Okay.
So I'll, um, move to accept the recommendation of the, um, work group, I guess.
Second.
Any further discussion?
One question, just on the contract.
Good job.
I'm sorry. I don't really want to ask this question. No, just on the contract, if we do want to add some kind of performance guarantee or whatnot to that contract, when do we want to have that? By, do you want to have us review that? How we have?
Yeah, so I would, I would seek to get a draft of that in before we, by just going to their next meeting.
Okay.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we'll order just for a second. We have a gentleman here from El Cipita patiently waiting. I know you're later on the agenda, but we'll, uh, take you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, my name is Jeff. Spoke a couple of weeks ago, our period wine license that we are applying for. Um, and we were looking to make sure that our, uh, our seasonal patio area would be included within that period wine license. Um, so we've worked with our landlords and also the building inspector, Tim, to, uh, have a fenced-in and gated, uh, area that was designated for, uh, you know, our outdoor seating. And, uh, we've, we've done that. Tim gave open the other day and gave us approval on our space. Uh, we have additional plans to have our servers tip certified, uh, once the, the license goes through. And also to have, you know, signs up for, you know, this is designated for beverages only here, nothing from outside of that. Um, yeah, so we're looking to have that just included.
And still the timeframe that you'll be open is just till eight o'clock at night?
Yes. Yep. Yeah, we close at eight o'clock. Uh, there's going to be no, you know, outdoor speakers or music or anything like that. So I don't think it'll be, you know, traffic growing or anything like that.
So the board has heard this application, uh, already and just recommending it to allow, uh, use of the patio. The patio is said, so it's been inspected by Tim. No objections.
Do you have a little diagram right there? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, a couple of pictures of it and a diagram of the space as well. Just off the corner of the building there. And we work with our, our landlords as well, make sure that they, you know, they have, if I don't say it, how it would look and how it would fit statically with the property and. Yeah, we plan, I mean, it's seasonal. We don't have any outdoor heaters or anything like that. I imagine it'd be, you know, by early October, it would probably be, well, check.
I'll make a motion to approve. I know, are they through, like, the permit?
They're done with the permit. I'm just adding an amendment to the existing one.
Right. And then it would be submitted to the state, uh, I think. So predate, yeah. Time.
Third, permission.
So the per, the permit hasn't been sent off to the state yet. We're, uh, assembling after the building. We made that request to them and-
Right.
So we talked to the state. They said just re, uh, rehold the area. And, uh, thank you voters. Send everything in one package.
I'll make a motion to approve the question.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye. Great. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
I think this gentleman looks like Verizon.
I do. Yes.
Uh, I'm here for a poll hearing. I don't have a certain time, but you're here. Would you like to, uh, get with it?
Sure. Would you like the former version or the Cliff Notes version?
And give a little vote if you'd like.
Cliff Notes, Cliff Notes, fine, unless somebody wants a fuller.
Um, just for record, my name's Paul Davis, I work for UC Synergetic. We're an engineering contract company, doing engineering work for Verizon. So I am here tonight representing Verizon on their behalf. Basically, the petition tonight, hopefully you have at least a copy in front of you, is in regards to a pole, T one sixty-four and a half, E nine M, on the westerly side of South Maple Street, at a point approximately one thousand four hundred and twelve feet suddenly from the center line of Russell Street. And basically, the objective of this pole is to be the connecting pole to the main line for the proposed solar field that's supposed to go down in that area. And that's basically it. So it ties in with the main line to the solar, the solar field, and that's its purpose.
So this is in addition to what man's just already? This is, this is a brand-new pole?
Correct.
An add-on?
Yes, a proposed pole, correct.
And both of our, just like all of you guys approved it?
Quick question, when you bring power to the pole or whatnot, is that going to be excavated or above or overhead? I don't represent ever source, so I can't definitively answer that question. However, based on my experience and what I've seen, it can go either, it can go aereally or underground. So to answer your question, I'm not certain.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just thinking about the project later on down the road and water main and all that, I don't think it's an issue. Yeah, that'd be a question you have to bring.
Is the pole going to be higher than any of the other poles, or is it the same height as all those existing poles?
It would, it would either be the same height or five feet higher. So they typically place on that street forty footers, it would be a forty-foot or forty-five.
All, all the ones they put into that solar field are, are the five-foot higher ones, and this is just a pole in between two.
Correct, it's what they call a mid-span pole, right.
Yeah, they're already all there from that solar.
And they're that high?
Yeah, they're already higher than a regular pole.
Okay.
Typically nowadays, they place forty-five foot poles.
That's, that's.
They got disconnects on three or four of those poles through there, so.
Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Please.
Second. Any further questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
You're done?
Okay.
Stop dressing like Verizon.
I'll dress down next time. Thank you.
Annual appointments we can take in a lump sum unless anybody has its boards and committees.
Yeah, it's only the cultural council at this point.
Cultural council.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in, any other questions? All those in favor?
Is this for the upcoming year or just for?
Correct.
This would be for the coming year.
July first to June thirty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just abstaining because my daughter's on there.
Okay.
It matters.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't even notice.
Not doing transfers tonight, correct?
We just did one.
You just did one, do we have any others?
No, unless there's some transfer that, uh.
Good. Okay, Phil's side, uh, we're going, not doing anything with Hampton House on age, aging governments tonight, I feel aged, like, government's on ambulance contract. We have a contract that is in a draft form that was sent to Jill Bard for review, and it's okay to go. So we are going to be having also a committee meeting on ambulance, I assume, maybe next week?
We haven't scheduled anything yet, have we?
We haven't scheduled anything yet, no.
Yeah, Barb O'Connor didn't answer the last, I don't know if she was out of town or, she's the chair, is she scheduling it, or do you want to, or she wants one of us to?
I had put it out there to see when, but I, I can send it out again to see when.
Okay, and then maybe you can make sure, just in case Barb's not available, between the three of us, we'll make sure it gets scheduled?
Yeah, I have one date on Wednesday next week.
I did email you the updated, with the corrections from.
From council.
From council, and also, Mr. Phil had made some recommendations, those were discussed with Action, those are added in there.
And they're okay with the rebates, like they promised?
The rebates, they're completely fine with. Uh, you're not going to see the language, they're getting me that if, but they're, the part on that has, has this waste, they are, that is standard practice, that they put that box in, it's under their OSHA standard, which is, and they're about to be added an independent line for that.
If we could aim for Monday, that'd be great, so.
Monday's fine.
So just check your mind, too, you can't do Tuesday?
Tuesday I have a class I teach.
You're teaching people?
Yeah, you never know what I'm teaching.
I don't know.
You want to come to the classes?
So chief, you'll have the post-line tomorrow?
Sure. It was only one correction from Action, they were happy with everything on the contract except for one financial statement, so you'll see that as well, and it was basically one word in that line, they requested it be a review rather than a full draft. They didn't want all of our, all their financial statements coming to us for all of their contracts, just specifically Hadley, they're fine. So we just amended, we amended that one.
They don't want us to know how much money they're making?
Yeah, we have it.
And David, I don't know, did you, did you send out to them, they've also received their full, they are no longer provisional, they have received their full ALS status, that's all been rectified.
So that's in my town administration.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Well, since we're doing ambulance, this is, and I have the full time to do that, you know, to tell them we have all of their things needed, so, yeah, that's, we want to go.
I, I did have one more question. If, if and when, hopefully when, the fire station passes, what, what sort of timeframe are we looking?
For building it out?
Yeah.
I believe the last, the last one we, don't quote you on this, I'm pretty sure it was like eighteen months, for, because we're going to have to go back and do some design, the building's going to stay the way it was designed, but it's going to have to be repositioned on the lot, so they would have to do that.
Okay, so do we have a motion or anything tonight, or are we waiting until June twentieth?
Yeah, June twentieth, we're going to have to clean documents in front of you. We've had a chance to look at all of this, it's been a blizzard of emails back and forth, so give you guys a chance to look it up and see.
And then the committee will need us to review it and report back on the twentieth, then we'll be good to go.
And in the spirit of hitting the ground running, maybe on the twentieth, assuming that we approve the contract, we could also talk about oversight?
Yeah. Do you want to talk a little bit about their outreach that they're doing and put that out there so people know about the upcoming meetings at the senior center and whatnot, so that way they can attend if they haven't seen it tonight?
Do you want me to? So they were at the senior, at the senior center last week, and upfront and clear said they are not currently under contract, but they didn't see, but they actually really gave high praise to the ambulance committee. They said, really put them through the wringer and had really good questions, so.
So sweet talkers.
But, um.
That's my class, not my.
But, um, yeah, so I sat through it, they were really informative, I also asked a lot of questions, and they will be back again on June eleventh at one P M. Public's totally invited to come hear all about Action EMS as their potentially new ambulance provider, and what they're going to be bringing, their certifications, what they're hoping to do working with the emergency personnel, and exclusively having one ambulance in-house at all times.
So they're just discussing their experience and what they're providing and just answering questions, is what they're basically doing for them?
They're, they're telling everybody what, you know, I asked, are they ALS, I needed to know that. I had been in a situation before where I was waiting with an officer doing CPR, then the regular ambulance came, they weren't ALS, and those four minutes we waited for the ALS ambulance to come felt like two hours. So just, I really kind of asked all those kinds of questions, people asked a lot of questions, they were very informative, and it sounded good that they were really, they had a model in place in other places to do what they wanted, what you want them to do insofar as training and things like that. So we asked all of those things. They did make it clear there isn't a contract at that point.
And one thing that, especially if you're meeting with big groups like that, and this is after probably the contract, but I, one of the features that I thought that they had was excellent was the fact that they had a database that they could, you know, put in that someone has heart issues or, or, you know, has a defibrillator or whatever the issues were.
Right.
And it's similar to what Mike was saying before with the, with the code red, now everybody knows to fill that in or go in there, so.
Right, right, they do want to do a lot of outreach.
You have to fill the database.
To build that database so that when they're going somewhere, they know that medical history already and can walk in their prepared. Of course, it's, it's dependent upon, you know, community participation, but interesting to know that that's possible.
But I, I also want to just, I'm going to do my nurse side for just a minute. I want to commend Susan for jumping in there to start CPR and to do that. I know it can be very difficult at times, but do those minutes count the most? And I want to say that no matter where you are, do not wait for your EMTs, your ALS, it doesn't matter what degree you have of service, whether you're paramedic or whatever. The initial thing, basic CPR is to jump in there and get the circulation going, circulation, circulation, that's all they tell you, skip the breath, you don't even have to do that.
Skip the breath.
So they, they tell you that now, so.
Chest compressions.
Just to do that and make people aware that it's really important to do that.
Something is better than nothing.
Correct.
Don't worry about doing it right, just do it.
That's right, so thank you.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. Do, do they need a contract to start setting up the mutual aid agreements, or can they start that before they have a contract?
We're actually working on that. Next week, we're meeting with multiple departments to start that, and we are also, Evan and I are working on the service own plan. It was recommended that we really be active members, active role in that service own plan, so we're probably going to handle the majority of that, just so that it's specific to Hadley. It was the same thing, Amherst put it together for us, but it was reviewed by myself and the select board and signed off by the select board. That's our town's document. They're our provider, yes, but that's an important document for us, and there's a lot of information in there, we have to make sure it's correct, so.
Okay, so it's almost like the town of Hadley is making that agreement as much as them?
As far as the mutual aid agreement, so that's, there's two separate things, yes, they are, they're going to be meeting with pretty much everybody surrounding us next week. We have, Tuesday's going to be a very busy day with, with the meetings and everybody. We sent out today to Amherst for, for Tuesday, that'll be a, a big, big meeting. South Hadley, District One and Two are on schedule for in the morning on Tuesday, and I believe he has a meeting with North Hampton that afternoon, and also, what was the last one? The, again, South County, South County EMS as well.
Okay, sounds good.
And how soon after the contract will there be, like, staff selection, and do we have any idea of, like, the date, the transition date, or can we say that now?
We don't select the staff.
But there is a committee to review who's going to be staffing that ambulance.
Yes, under their contract, there is, we were, we will be provided with the list of all the folks that are going to be working in Hadley for us to review their, their qualifications and everything having to do with them. And that's an ongoing thing, so if there's any issues in, in town, it's under the contract, that if we have an EMT that we feel is not performing to the, the standard that we need in Hadley, we, we will let them, make them aware of that, and they'll be providing us with an alternative, so.
That's why I was hoping next, on the twentieth one, we have that final contract weekend, and just lay all of that groundwork, so once July one hits, we know who's, like, on those committees and all that stuff.
So is that July one is when the contract will start?
That's their starting date.
That would be when they're starting service?
Yeah. We're hoping for a transition, a seamless transition from June thirtieth to July first, that's, that's what we're working on right now. On the twentieth, can we invite someone from, a representative from Action to show up in case we have any issues or last-minute questions that we can address at that night, so that we can get this done?
Yeah.
Yeah, because they'll be under the gun to get working here, that, you know, they'll have less than two weeks to, right?
They're in good company.
Yeah. That's crunch.
Mike, do you want to reach out to them, or do you want David to?
I've been emailing Michael about fourteen times a day, so I'd be happy to, it's up to you, I can email.
Throw in one more.
Okay, I'll text them right now.
Thank you.
What time would you like him here? Seven, fifteen?
Yeah, seven fifteen, that'll be good. We'll do ambulance first.
That's usually, we have the meeting with Amherst.
Yes.
Oh.
So the twenty?
Same meeting.
Different select board meeting on the twenty.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Just one more question, I'm sorry, that committee, like, that you want to set up for the ambulance, do you want to have people, I don't know if we have to approve that committee or how that is, but maybe have that committee ready to go on the twentieth?
I have, I have requested that, it's supposed to be the fire chief, select board member, and I believe a member of the public.
Okay.
So that's your decision. The fire chief is pretty much set in stone, or my, I would have, have an act on my behalf.
Yeah, yeah.
But the other ones, that's up to you, but I think it's important that we have that in place as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody who's actually on the committee now might be a good fit, because they've gone through the whole ambulance process, if they're willing to be a part of that. But fully up to you.
The twentieth and had it, is that, right, so I was thinking about public members, do you want to have time?
Yeah.
Get some letters of interest or something.
Yeah. We've got a little short time to get the letter to just.
Yeah, do we want to say we're looking for people for that committee?
We also might have somebody from off of our committee that is public, that may want to serve also on the.
Maybe if you ask Carrots.
Or, yeah, or Barb, too.
Or Barb.
Barbara Connor. Right, yeah, I think one of them.
If they have the time.
If they have the time.
Okay. All good. Uh, here we are again, North Hadley Village Hall, love that place.
Why don't you buy it?
For a dollar?
Greg, I thought you were moving in there.
And if I could buy it for a dollar, you know what I would do quickly?
Oh, no.
Not again.
I would be pulling our fire department to the test.
If you remember back.
Same, same, Joe.
Who'd buy a building?
If you remember back.
Use it for, for practice.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, David, I'm sorry.
David, please go ahead.
Go ahead on this North Hadley Hall.
Oh, we love about you.
Yeah, go ahead, David, it's yours, take it.
All right, thank you. The last time we talked about this, one of the members of the board suggested that we look into a real estate broker in order to market the building and get a better price for it. Check with the powers that be in Boston, and we have to procure the services of a broker. So I quickly gave this up, draft RFP for a commercial real estate broker in order to assist the town with selling North Hadley Village Hall, which is pretty straightforward, it's an evaluation, not above the price, but the best qualified person who can offer the most advantageous price and qualifications has to do with depth of experience, strength of their management team, work that they've done in similar projects, and an interview, see who would be able to best represent the town on the commercial, on real estate market.
I have a question.
Sure.
So a proposal deposit, it says a proposal deposit of twenty-five hundred dollars is required as part of the proposal submission, and I'm assuming.
I thought I edited that out, but shouldn't be there.
Oh, so not requiring in this instance, we should remove, you're removing a whole proposal deposit?
Yeah.
That makes more sense to me.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So.
Because otherwise, like, who?
You're right. So I, I think this is great. Did the Historical Commission reduce some of these restrictions that were on it that caused the issue of last time around? So that way the, whoever's putting in a proposal is gonna look at the restrictions and say, I'm not messing with this thing.
Yeah. So I haven't shown this to the Historic Commission. We, we went through a process last time where we did, quite frankly, overload the boat with too many restrictions.
Boy, did you.
And then it didn't seem like the town was actually interested in selling the property. But after we received proposals, further restrictions just kept on popping up, so.
And we were, the Building Committee and Historical and all of those are supposed to get together from one of our last meetings to make sure the RFP was worded correctly and finalized. And is that, has that been done?
No, that has not been done. This is the first chance that you've done a chance to take a look at it, so I wanted to give you the first whack at it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it was a great suggestion David made to hire a broker. I like the idea of doing this, but it seems like we do need to, and, and the good news is the Historical Commission is, is starting to re, restaff again. So we, do we want them to take another pass at it?
On the RFP, other RFP? Not this, but just the regular, the North Hadley Hall?
Yeah, I mean, I think we, we can go ahead and run with this.
Yes.
But I'm sorry, Jason, I was thinking mentally about reviewing the restrictions.
Yeah, but I mean, they're gonna run into each other here at some point. So we need to get that RFP stringed out with the Building Committee, with the Historical, with us, and wherever else as well.
Why don't we just write another RFP on our side?
There wasn't much, well, there wasn't much with the Building Committee that they wanted to change, but the Historical, I believe there was some that we were gonna take out of it.
What?
Well, you want to take one out.
Yeah, I mean, I.
They were willing, when.
Well, you can't sell a piece of property and have somebody go in and inspect it afterwards after you buy it.
Well, I, I think we're talking about two different things. There's an RFP for a real estate agent, a real estate broker, either one. And then we were talking about the previous RFP for someone to purchase the property individually directly from the town. Yeah, yeah. So we, we don't even need to worry about that. We just need to worry about the actual restrictions that are being placed on the property, right?
Right. And have those reviewed again with a new eye and see if some of them should be removed.
Like halfway to the.
Right. You know, there is one right now.
Exactly.
Right. So I think the only, the only document that Historic Commission still needs to produce for us is the preservation restriction in its final form. So that, we're gonna have to get that from them before we can release this.
Is there, I know they're, they're own body, but is there any way we could put a timeline on this to put this forward?
Yeah.
How long would we, I, I was thinking parallel paths. So have, have, can we have a deadline on this RFP? Have it, with this RFP, submit the old hall RFP and say we're drafting it, we're revising it, but at least they have an idea what we're selling. And then in, parallel to that, have the Historical Commission reviewing it and have a deadline.
All those restrictions are gonna scare off a lot of qualified people that would be able to get us some decent money for the property because I, looking at that as a buyer, you feel like you're crazy. I don't want it. It's worthless.
Yeah.
But, no, yeah. I was trying to speed it up a little bit. Well, yeah, I mean, we can, maybe we can move forward and if we can put a deadline on the Historical Commission restrictions. I'm sure Joyce wants it done soon, so.
They're, they're meeting the twenty-sixth.
We brought it to town meeting over five years ago.
Right.
I'm pretty sure it's the twenty-sixth. I'm supposed to go to the meeting.
One of the, one of the challenges to this particular parcel is that it's so old that it doesn't have a deed. It does, you know, we clearly have town media votes show that the inhabitants took over the, the property. But, so that may be a little complication, but we'll work through that one.
So we need a motion or anything to move forward?
For this, for this real estate broker to put out the RFP?
What if we put this out? What are we attaching to it for the North Hadley Hall?
That's, that's.
Yeah.
Can we?
They need something to look at before they start.
That's why I say, can we just submit the old one with them and say, hey, we're trying to minimize all these restrictions. Do you have feedback? Or, you know, we're gonna, they're obviously gonna have feedback removed at all, but Historical Commission might be able to review it as well at the time.
Can we move forward, maybe getting a pool of possible brokers that would be interested in this at least, so we can move in that direction? In the meantime, while they're reviewing their restrictions? Or, I don't know how that would work. And that way, once the restrictions are done, we can say, email it out to those towns, say, here you go.
Yeah.
You know, Christian, possibly some of these brokers may have a, a better avenue for the RFP than we do with, with the restrictions, you know? So may, maybe it's worth taking a look at a couple, two or three of them and see what they offer.
But it wouldn't take us that long to review.
No, no, no. The real estate agents or whatever may have some better options for us to sell this property rather than the, the way we're going right now with our, with our, we won't, we won't need an RFP anymore because we're just doing the RFP for the broker. We're not doing an RFP for the sale. Well, for, for the restriction, they may have a better alternative for the restriction than what we have.
I think we need to take a look at it as a committee and see which ones we want to remove.
Yeah, I agree.
Put that in our, our panel to, give us the RFP.
All right. So some, some of the plan is, is that we have a little bit more state work to do on this, working with the, with the Historic Commission in particular, trying to get the historic preservation restriction talking and finalize. They may have to work with the common law. I think that they've already done a lot of that work.
Yeah.
And.
Jigger was in, I thought they were talking about a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
Two meetings back.
Circulate this with the municipal building committee so far they're input, but pretty straightforward RFP or bring it back for implementation and say middle of July or something like that.
Sounds good.
I, my only problem is like if we delay sending this out, if we don't vote tonight, send this out, it's gonna be weeks, months. It's, you know, this is gonna turn into a lot of time and we're gonna be delaying this project again where, you know.
We still got eighteen months before we vacate that building too. So you gotta take that into consideration.
I guess. Yeah, yeah. That's fine, but I just would rather take action rather than not take.
Well, is there any reason why we can't just move forward with this tonight? It's a matter of logistics, is what you're saying.
I think the RFP just is a little more tweaking, but I think we can make a motion to move forward with issuing an RFP for the sale of the house.
Real estate.
Okay. Say, second? I'll second. Sorry. I thought you were seconding and I didn't want to second it over here.
Call us a favor?
Hi.
Okay. All right. All right. Update, Senior Center and Live Building Library? We're here. Yes, we're here. Okay.
We're preparing to go before the Planning Board on June nineteenth. We have obtained a peer review from Berkshire Design and they're coming back basically with a clean slate that we have met all the requirements of the zoning bylaws.
That letter will be received on the twelfth.
By the Planning Board. They have to have it a week before their meeting. And I mean, it wasn't clean. There were some tweaks to be done and the architect for both buildings are making those changes.
But nothing in surmountable?
Nothing in surmountable.
So just to recap for people that the Planning Board meeting will be held at Hopkins Academy.
Yes.
In the cafeteria.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
And then the library?
Oh, I was gonna say, we have an issue we were gonna discuss in executive session. And I just wanted to recommend that Suzanne and Jane sit in with us on that executive session, meeting. I don't know how much we want to get into, but I just think they would be good to represent. It doesn't have to do with litigation, but just with our strategy regarding moving forward with the Planning Board and the Senior Center Committee.
I think we needed to have a discussion amongst the selectmen tonight for that purpose. But that's my own theory. I mean, you can, I'm just one person.
I'm just wondering if it'd be helpful to have them there at least for fact, fact sharing. And then we can always ask them to be excused once we start discussing.
Does it really have to be in executive session?
That's my question.
Yeah. It does.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be, but it's a really good idea.
Really good idea, yeah.
I don't have a problem with it being published.
Well, no, they're, they're asking to attend.
Yeah, yeah.
The executive session.
No, I mean, they'll.
But what they want to share with us now, can't that be done in open session?
No.
No?
No. I think so, because it has to do with the strategy, so.
Yeah, you're being, you're being sued by one, by a party. You really don't want to talk about that in open session.
But we're, we can't, we can't discuss that in front of them either.
That's what I'm saying. I think to the extent they're present for information sharing, that would be helpful because there may be questions of the Select Board members who aren't on.
But I don't have that. I have, I don't have that in the executive session. I have litigation, land court case, and that has pertaining to the Legion.
That's, yeah, that's here on the agenda in executive session, but I didn't know other issues were.
Correct.
Other issues were.
They're resolved in executive session.
It's one big bundle of stuff.
Stuff.
Your call. I'm over the chair.
I mean, uh.
I mean, the legal issue is one separate issue that shouldn't be in executive session. The other issue, I don't have a problem with it in public.
I mean, do we want to take a vote on whether to?
You can take a vote on, yeah, if you want. You want to open it up to public or you want to leave it in an executive session.
Yeah. No, I don't want to open it up to the public. Because again, as David pointed out, this is all part of our.
They're, they're two separate issues.
No. I don't.
It looks like to me.
Would you agree, David?
I, there's information that Counsel shared with me that I would prefer that I speak frankly with the board about. And I don't think that I can do that in a situation where there's a lawsuit in open session.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. So I'm good. We'll look that to executive session. Or, that's what I'm saying. I'm not, Joyce should say that. I'm good though.
Well, we have a couple of other things.
We have other things.
Other things to take care of for us before executive session. So, let's see. Was there any other? David, did you have anything else in your administrative report?
Still on the beginning.
Well, we kind of went around the circle.
You're, you're going wild over here.
I am wild.
We want to get out of here tonight.
I am wild. No, well, because other people were sitting here. So we, we put David off on, even, we had him not even do his report. So let's, let's have him do what we missed.
Add public comments, I think.
Yeah.
And I don't think anybody is here for public comments. Unless you have one.
I don't.
No. All right. David, go for it.
All right. Going very quickly. Stop me if I'm going too fast.
Oh, thank you.
MS four, it's on. The EPA said that they're not going to withhold implementation. So we are now entering to the first year of a five-year contract, a five-year permit that will take ten years to unfold. We have the money in place. We have Marla doing a lot of good work in the interim period and are positioning the town strategically to take advantage of the best management practices that are going to be required by the new permit. So we have a notice of intent that's due on October first, and we have a draft notice of intent ready to go. Just moving through here. Bay Road Bridge replacement. You had a stakeholders meeting for, there's gonna be a replacement in 2020. So we need to be thinking about traffic flow. North Hampton Rotary in 2019, Bay Road Bridge replacement 2020, Route Nine widening in 2021. There's gonna be a lot of new dirt and a lot of traffic and a lot of things to coordinate. We'll be very busy people for that.
And we'll get blamed for that too.
And then North.
And rightly so.
North Hampton Rotary is ahead of the bridge?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They've talked about multiple roads.
Can I make a quick comment on the meeting we had?
Sure.
So originally, they were saying that they were gonna take the whole bridge out. It would be a detour. There was talk of that. When we met there last Thursday, they changed their mind. It's gonna be a two-piece bridge. They're gonna have one lane traffic the whole time while they're replacing the bridge, one side then the other. They found it easier moving the water main to the downstream side.
Were we on Bay Road?
Bay Road, yes. Excuse me.
I thought you were talking about the Coolidge Bridge.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So.
This is about a town.
Long story short.
Yeah.
The changes they, they wanted to meet with me about and whatnot are gonna be an advantage for the town. It sounds like it's gonna probably be a little less money with our twelve-inch. You're gonna pay the difference, but they're gonna have to go further up the road to go get into our twelve-inch. So twenty-five percent plans were sent to me a little bit back. The responses were due. They said, throw them away. We're coming to meet with you. They called me about half hour before quitting time the day before and said they'd be here. So just wanted to give a quick update on that. As of right now, the bridge is not coming out as a whole. It's gonna be one lane traffic, like when it was closed to one lane before.
Are they gonna try to fast lane this too? After the traffic, traffic studies and all the other input that they've gotten from police, fire.
Yeah.
Us, you.
Yeah. As far as I know, they're, I mean, they're moving right along with it now. They want to, they want to get on it. Benesh Corp, I guess, I guess is the, the contract, contracted consultant firm or whatnot. But had a long discussion with him and they're, they're wanting to get on this on time and they want to get it done. That's why they're having multiple walks out here, multiple discussions with myself and whatever. So they'll be speaking with Conservation again also too.
During construction, will it have a good load rating on that bridge? Because I know a lot of farmers that have farms on the south side and come north and just, it can be an issue if they've got to go.
I've, I've been asked that question many times, but the, the repair they just did was to put the original load ratings back on it.
Yeah.
So it's still gonna be one lane, one-way traffic. You're gonna be fine. There's gonna be no load restriction on, restrictions on it at this point. They did not say there would be anything to do.
And free for ambulances?
Yes, yes.
There'll be no.
Fire truck.
It'll, it'll be like when they did one-sided, the one-sided repair they did this past time and then they raised the, the weight limit for any kind of vehicle to go over. That's the way it's supposed to be, this whole project, is how I understand it.
And the rating of the new bridge is gonna be more than obviously the rating of the old bridge?
Yes, and it's, it's gonna be about eight to 10 feet wider.
Okay.
One sidewalk. That's gonna provide for future bike lanes or something to that effect. But I, I wanted them to move the water main to the other side because it's gonna prevent having to, having them to deal with a temporary water system. So they can build the home twelve-inch dry, John. If they get it all dry, they, they charge it, they do their testing, they hook up.
It's only a day or two to tie it in on one side and tie it in on the other side.
Rather than fire hoses feeding both sides of the bridge and then the customers. So that's the plan now.
Because then you're looking at more water breaks down South Maple Street. If you're gonna reroute that water around from the water tank.
All right. So moving right along, the Route Nine, South Maple Street Sewer Line Emergency Repair is substantially complete. Ludy Bridge Road flat grant. We're meeting on Friday morning with the accountant to get the grant terms worked out. Designed for this fire substation, we've raised an additional eight hundred fifty-five thousand four hundred. That's a vote that's on Thursday, June twenty-first over Hopkins Academy from noon to eight p.m. Almost nobody knows about this. So we're going.
Little size of everywhere.
Yeah.
Police Facebook, fire Facebook, emails.
Yeah, Chief and I are going to work on Friday. We're gonna do a mass mailing.
Do we have a ad on Channel Five?
We can, right? Yes, we can. It's, it's, thank you.
And how about those signs out front of the, of the DPF he was putting up? Uh.
Sign boards.
Sign boards. Those seem pretty good.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, but we, but we need to make sure that people understand what they're voting for because, you know, this is technical language. It's not spelt out in the way that I would write it out if I wanted to communicate clearly with people. So doing the mass mailing is going to be very helpful in getting people to understand what it is that they're talking, we're talking about and what kind of impacts on tax rates, et cetera.
Also, I know that Kenzie also sends out stuff on the town, you know, and she does her weekly emails to everyone. But she sends out town stuff all the time.
David, what's this, what, or maybe you can ask, what's the story with the cross, crosswalk, the.
David, what's this, what, or maybe you can ask, what's the story with the cross crosswalk, the signals over there?
Yeah, I thought that was supposed to be up early. They're waiting for the parts of those project.
Yeah, the electrician came in for a few days to do a little bit of their work. I tried contacting the the engineer that was assigned the project, I think he's out on vacation, so. I'm assuming there was probably a blip in the parts coming in to be attracted fair living or something, but that's a guess.
Moving right along, the the SCADA system, the mission system for the seven substations. The mission system is fully operational, we still have some electrical work to do at the waste water treatment plant itself, but that seems to look like that's scheduled for completion by June eleventh. Talked about that.
The Turka Park?
So Turka Park, we received the contracts back from the last, oh, Mass General landscaping, but they didn't have the payment fund as required, and so we've gotta call into them just saying, you know, you forgot a piece of paperwork that we need, so.
What working piece of paperwork?
Well, legally required piece of paperwork, not a legal contractor without it. Connecticut River Subservice, the Levy Subservice Survey, we received a final report on that. This project is substantially complete. We, you and I have a meeting with the engineer and then we'll have them come in to do a presentation for you. We can plug that into the capital plan. Special town meeting update, you just took the action and a recruit that I asked you to. Ambulance, we talked about that. OSHA, so we started talking about one federal unfunded land mandate, this is a new one. Formerly, we were exempt from OSHA regulations, but they made a change to the workplace safety law. Mass General law, chapter one forty-nine, section six and a half amended to require safety regulations of OSHA to apply to municipalities on February first, July nineteen. So there's a lot of training opportunities that are coming up from that, we're not quite clear on what this may mean, but it'll probably affect capital, particularly for fire, and probably affect some operational requirements of many departments, particularly having to do with reporting standards that are not going to go fine.
N F P A usually covers most of OSHA.
Not this one.
Not this one.
The Maya cover any of that training?
Yes, so we met with the Maya to find out if there's any training and they've got doodles that are coming up, there's gonna be a lot of, a lot of training opportunities by the state, by our insurance company. There'll be consultants coming out, woodwork, looking to help us out. Everybody's in the same boat, we're gonna have to scramble to comply to this new regulation.
And of course, they're not funding it.
Correct. On what the mandate?
State way. All right, any announcements?
The governor's number is?
So we skipped over the library building update? So the library?
He's here. There you go, go for it.
So the library update is the committee approved the schematic design on Monday with the recommendation it would go to the library trustees next, but unanimously approved that so that it will now move into the building and design phase. So, you know, it's into the big rate from this point on. And then just one other thing is I wanted to acknowledge that I know at least one other select board member, but there were several concerns expressed by the public about the traffic flow for the flea market this past weekend. Again, confluence of fabulous weather with, you know, just a high-traffic period, so. We acknowledge that and the police department is actively working on working on figuring out, you know, what possibly could have gone any better, some more to come on that front.
Yes, I actually did take a write-up there to have some conversation with my officers and with the owner of the property. And Sajamation, so they are all working on that and we'll have further update and hopefully see what the weather brings this weekend.
Yeah, there's a couple, yeah, there should be an email waiting for you.
Any other announcements tonight?
There was a draft of meeting dates for, I don't remember, are we able to do that tonight, approve that? That you had some doubt, are we?
Yeah, so I think I think we have meeting dates scheduled through September.
Do you have such a busy schedule?
I think you got that clear, yes.
So I have tentatively September fifth, September.
Labor Day week?
No, Labor Day week, so.
See, aren't you glad we're looking at it?
So Labor Day, but it's actually on the third, so the picture's scheduled for the fifth.
But that's your point.
That's okay, I guess we can do with this.
Nineteenth of September.
We already did this in September.
Yes.
We didn't do October.
October third. Make sure I'm skipping something.
The eleventh is the public forum. Town meeting is the eighteenth.
So October, October third, we need to make this, October fourth is the last name, most of the warrant. The eleventh, and we have the seventeenth and eighteenth.
Third, eleventh, seventeenth, eighteenth.
Selectmen report town meeting and then town meeting on the eighteenth at seven P M.
So the seventeenth was when I was.
Seventeenth is the select.
Okay.
Possible meeting on September twenty-sixth, if we can get Oliver Dux on.
On the twenty-sixth?
Yeah, September twenty-sixth, that's.
For what?
Signing the warrant, if it doesn't happen to happen that night.
Can we do it on the nineteenth?
Anything, can you push it later?
Yeah, you can't do it.
So we could do it for the third, yeah.
Yeah, why can't we do it for the third?
The third?
The third.
So until the twenty-sixth?
You wanna finish the year?
It's every Wednesday, I just count on it. From then till the end of the year.
That's all I do, I just like to have a nice.
So I got I got these pages.
Seriously, they don't pay the whole toll.
August two thousand nineteen, so sure.
Should we have a Halloween meeting?
Yeah.
You make a couple bucks.
November seventh and November fourteenth, so you're not doing it.
You're paying for it, right?
And then, I've got December fifth and September nineteenth.
So basically the first and the third, unless otherwise.
Yeah, so.
Okay, sounds good. Good, David?
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We have Stanley's retirement party on Sunday from two to seven. Dinner at four?
Correct.
And dance, dance?
Polish music.
Polish music.
Oak by Shoe By.
Oak by Shoe By, just for Stanley. You haven't purchased your tickets yet, you may at the public safety complex or from?
You can you can get in touch with us at the safety complex. We're getting close to the deadline, so. Yesterday, but we'll we'll still take people.
Okay, so people can still sign up.
They can still get in touch with us, we'll figure it out.
And you're if you're holding tickets for us, we just pay you at the door?
Any other announcements?
Yes.
We have a community shredding event happening June fifteenth, it's a Friday. It's for anybody and everybody, I don't know that there are any limits. It's happening from eleven A M. to one P M. in the back parking lot of the Council on Aging. Police Association's gonna be cooking up hot dogs and hamburgers, it's free. You can also get rid of your hard drives and you can watch it get shredded right there, so. Start going through your stuff, get rid of it, identity theft, don't leave those things lying around.
So any any hard drives?
Yep.
D V Ds, any media, basically?
I think so.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll shred, pretty much anything, you throw a car in there and it'll.
If we're gonna go, someone's gonna drop their car off.
There's a pair of fire vehicles over.
And I have four announcements since we've had a couple of weeks off. I have condolences this evening for four people. We have Leonard Horton, he was a graduate of Hopkins Academy. He, actually, at one point, we owned a Horton house on West Street, so they go back along history of having lived here in Hadley, so our condolences to his family. Mr. Craig Harbison, I didn't know him, but he was a resident of Hadley, our condolences to his family. Robert Keita was a graduate of Hopkins and had lived here in town. His brothers are Richard Keita and James Keita, and our condolences to them for his passing. Elsie Andrews, she was in West, she graduated from Hopkins also. Active with the Council on Aging, she worked for many years and retired from Bay State NICU as a registered nurse, and our condolences to her family also. Any else? Motion to go into executive session.
So we're gonna do all three of these? Want to make one motion for all three?
Yes.
Jeffrey, could you say something?
No.
Or if you need to make a motion, make motion.
So the big motion that we got is to executive session is for according to provisions of N G L, chapter thirty-eight, to discuss strategy with respect to the bargaining or litigation if there are been meetings. They have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair sort of declares, and we are also getting them to executive session in the same reasoning to discuss contract negotiations with non-union personnel, the chief of police, as well as police lieutenants, not to convene, reconvene in open session.
Has the chair, is a detriment to do these cases in open session?
You declare.
I still declare.
You do declare.
I do declare going to executive session.
David, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a roll call, so.
Yes.
Yes.
So, Stan, wait.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
All right, we're in executive session, folks.